Seven o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you'd please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, are there any additions or deletions to this evening's agenda?
No, not tonight.
Are there any corrections to the minutes of the regular board meeting from June 15, 2015? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the June 15, 2015, board meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And those stand approved. We go on to reports. I don't have a report for us this evening. Madam Clerk, do you have a report?
Not tonight.
Madam Treasurer is not with us this evening. And is there anyone who would like to move to pay the bills?
I'll move to pay the bills.
Second.
Is there any discussion or questions on paying the bills? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, roll call please on paying those bills.
Mrs. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Coats, yes. Mr. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Menudis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We shall pay the bills. Are there any trustee reports?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. If you'll just indulge me for a couple of moments, as you always do. I, a couple of weeks, about two weeks ago, I took my wife and daughter and granddaughter to a, out west, to a, and we took a bus trip through some of the national parks. And we started in, at the Grand Tetons in western Wyoming. And the bus took us across the entire state, and Yellowstone National Park, and Bill Cody's Ranch, and a few other places. And we ended up in Mount Rushmore in South Dakota. And that was very inspiring. Some may not know this, but next to Mount Rushmore is a memorial being built to a Indian chief, Crazy Horse, who was the Indian chief that wiped out Custer at Little Big Horn. And that was really the start of the, well, it was during the war between the Indians. We didn't treat the Indians very, very well. But anyway, there's a memorial being built to Crazy Horse on one of the mountains. And they're blasting it out of a mountain that's very close to Mount Rushmore. And the head and face is completed already, and it's, it's an impressive sight. And if anybody gets out there, they should go. And they have a very large Indian museum. And I, and there's some stuff, there, there's some items there. And I brought back a couple of gifts to some of our board members. This I purchased for our supervisor, Karen Miller. This is, Karen, a talking stick.
I noticed it's very short.
Well, it's a talking stick. And I'll just read the attachment that's to it. And this was used by the Indians, or by Native Americans, I guess we call them now. And it says here, about this talking stick, that for centuries, Native Americans have used a simple method of keeping order at council meetings. Okay? Only one person was allowed to talk at a time. The speaker is determined by who holds the talking stick. As a talking stick is passed to each person in the council, all members get to give their opinion equally and without interruption. Often, a time limit is set for each oration in order to further encourage a fair representation of opinions. So I'm going to present this talking stick to you. This is your talking stick, and you can use it as, as you wish.
Thank you very much. They must have known Robert's rules.
Well, and, and I also have a present for trustee Menudis, as, that they were giving out at the, at the memorial. They did a lot of blasting to, to make the face, and he's supposed to be on a horse. And they estimate that this will be done in about 50 years. But in any way, the, the, the head and the face are there. And I picked out, up a, at the Crazy Horse Memorial, a blast fragment that they were selling for $2 each. And I brought this to, for George. And this is a blast fragment. And this is to be used in case Karen doesn't pass you the talking stick. And I'm going to give this, I'm going to give you this to George, and it's yours to use as you wish.
Are you sure this is a, you want to give it? It looks like there's gold in it.
Well, no, I made sure before I gave it to you there was no gold. Because if there was, you'd melt it down, probably.
Well, that's what they did in the old days.
Does anybody know, do you know who the presidents are on Mount Rushmore, by the way?
George Washington.
Abraham Lincoln.
Abraham Lincoln. Thomas Jefferson. And Roosevelt.
Yes, you're right. Very good. Give her a start. Cheering.
Evidently, you've been there.
Oh, I've never been there.
It's quite a sight. The presidents on Mount Rushmore, there's four of them, built into this mountain. All four of them can be fit all together in the head of Crazy Horse that's being built a few miles away. So it's quite, quite impressive if you ever go there. That's all I have tonight.
I want to thank you, Frank, for the stone. But, for everybody here, you have to marry for money, not love.
I don't know what that means, George, but...
Well, you're always traveling, huh? I can't keep, it brings me back a stone. Geez.
A $2 stone.
Well, okay. I thank you, anyway.
I'm sure it costs more money to get it back here than it did out there. So trustee Castle, I'm surprised that you were thinking about us on your vacation. Thank you very much.
I was. I'm always thinking about the township while I'm, while I'm away.
Are there any...
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other trustee reports? So we will move on to general reports. Chief Sippert, do you have a report for us this evening?
Just a couple of things. I just wanted to report that Officer Michael Schuyler, the officer that was involved in the shooting on January 23 of this year, at the Hometown Inn, who was shot twice, he received a couple more awards since our last board meeting. He received the Medal of Honor from the Michigan Association, the Chiefs of Police, at their annual meeting. That is one of the highest awards that that association gives out. And he was also recognized last week by the Hundred Club of Genesee County and Shawasi and Lapeer County. So we're very proud of that. And also, a National Night Out is coming up quickly, August 4, 2015. And I contacted Monday Township and Schwartz Creek and asked them if they would like to participate this year with our National Night Out in hopes, I know that, I don't think they had an event, and if it was, it was kind of small. So I was hoping to draw in more residents from our neighboring communities. So they're going to be working in conjunction with us, and it'll be a team effort. And then finally, we are still accepting applications for entry-level police officer until Thursday of this week at 5:30. That's when the closing time is to turn those applications in. They're available online, on our website, on the township website, they're available at the police station, and they're available here at the clerk's office. So we've gotten up to this point, I believe I counted this morning, we had 14 applications.
You had another one this evening before we...
That's a long ways off of how it was a few years ago when we had over 100 applications. So things have changed quickly.
Chief Sippert, you said National Night Out will be August, what, 4?
Fourth, Tuesday.
Okay. And then, the time?
I, it's usually around 5 to 7. But we'll have the exact dates, the times coming up.
And then, for sure it's at the police station in the park area?
Yes, yes.
Like last year? Alrighty. Thank you very much. Assistant Chief Berkeley, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I'd like to announce the, the Fire Department has got a Facebook page now up and running to promote safety and promoting the department. We've put stuff on there about fireworks safety. We put stuff on there about the siren change, which I'm going to talk about here, the, the testing of the sirens and that. So if you get out there in Facebook, take a look at our page. It's all safety information and a little bit about the department, stuff like that.
What's the, is it?
Flint Township Fire Department.
Fire Department.
On Facebook, yep. So anyways, the 100 Club of Genesee in Shawasi County and Lapeer County, we attended a dinner the other night, and they, we received a grant for $1,500. They give us these big checks. And don't know if they worked very good. But anyways, this is like the fourth grant we've gotten from them. We bought firefighting gloves. Them are, take the most abuse of all the gear we get. They get lost, they get holes in them, it doesn't take long in that. But that went to a lot of good use there. We got firefighting gloves for the guys there, down at the Fire Department. We'll soon be advertising for Full-Time Firefighter. That will be out soon. It's a process, it gets in place, you just talk to the clerk. And we're going to get that process going this week, probably. It's a 30-day application period, along with, starting with interviews, sorting the applications out. It's a process that will take probably the next couple of months to sort through them and get down to the testing, the fire written test, and agility. And so that will be going on in the next, hopefully, the next three, four months. Tornado siren is, the test date was changed from the 4th of July, which would be the first Saturday of the month, to the 11th. Emergency manager, the YLC, made that change. Again, we put it on our Facebook page. By the way, there is like 700 likes already on the page. It just went wildfire. We got like 50 in one day. So, I don't know. Yep, that's it.
808 likes.
There's 800 likes. So there we go. It's really jumped on, on board there, so. Yes.
Mike, on the siren testing, that change to the second Saturdays, just for July, because the 4th of July fell on, the holiday fell on on Saturday, right?
Correct. Ended at 1 o'clock in the afternoon. So you're here, this Saturday, the siren testing will, will be conducted at 1 o'clock.
Second Saturday. So they're normally on the first Saturday, and they test from, during tornado season, right? April?
All the way to October, yes.
October.
Yeah, we've had tornado warnings actually in October before. And so they test it. Now, winter months, they don't test them because the unit is a motor up there, and it's cold, and it will damage the motor through the winter, plus that, that, and they will activate them, because we've had some spring weather come in the middle of December before. So they can be utilized, it's just they do not test them through the winter months. Friday morning, we had a structured fire at Shrimper Moor. The guys made a fantastic stop in the building. You probably can't even tell besides it's right here at 75 and Corona Road. They made a real good stop. Pastor Byron noticed smoke coming from the windows. The guys got on immediately, within minutes, and started commencing firefighting, and found a fire in the kitchen area. It appears it'd be non-suspicious. It's still under investigation. The insurance company's been working with our investigator, Sergeant Kelly, on it. And, but, minimum damage, but the fire was in the ceiling. The guys had to pull a lot of the ceiling in the, in the store to get to hidden fire where it ran up in the ceiling. That particular building had three roof lines. And so as they punched through a drop ceiling, there was another ceiling. As it got through that, there was a roof. Then they got through that, there, so, two roofs, two ceilings, is basically what the guys were, and there were fire between every one of them. So that fire can be very tricky in that, so we had to do that. Also, in house fires, I'd like to touch on the Darby House Fire that occurred approximately 30 days ago. And there were some comments that the Fire Department, you know, our response and what going on to that. The alarm come in at the Darby Fire down here at Die and Darby at 1:31. Engine 31 was on location in, at 1:38. So that's a seven-minute on time. Engine 31 comes out of the station by the airport. Captain Stadler was on scene at 1:41. He was our duty captain that day. And the Schwartz Creek engines were called by Captain Stadler, and the Flushing Department was called by Captain Stadler to respond to that incident. They were on at 1:48. They were at a call, Schwartz Creek was. So they were able to respond fairly quickly. Usually it's a 10-minute or plus for them, but they were already on a call. That was one of the reasons he called them. They assisted us on that. And the Flushing truck was on at 2 o'clock. So that was almost 30 minutes later. So just to clarify a few things on, on the Darby Fire.
How long was that incident? How long were you guys over there?
I don't know the total length of time on the incident. Usually it's anywhere, depending on, well, that was pretty extensive there. I think they were around three and a half, four hours. Down at Shrimper Moor, it was about two and a half hours. Yeah, it wasn't. But they wanted to make sure they didn't have to go back. And that takes a lot, to wait, let it rest a little still. So that's all I have.
So both our police and fire departments work in cooperation with neighboring municipalities, and it's, we call it mutual aid.
Correct.
And how long have we worked with mutual aid?
I don't know. Do you know when the first pack was signed? There's a, I believe there was, just re-signed, not long ago, amongst all the mutual, between police and fire agencies. But they've been doing it my entire career in the first...
Decades.
Yeah.
Decades? So it's not uncommon that we would call for mutual aid?
Oh, not at all.
It's, it's impossible to, to operate just in an island by yourself. You have to rely on neighbors. And we work together as a team.
Thank you. I had another question on this, the testing for civil service. It took a couple meetings to meet with civil service to get the requirements for a full-time firefighter hashed out with the commissioners, the civil service commissioners, correct?
Correct.
So at the last meeting, was, was that approved at the last meeting, or was Chairman Rockwell, was he looking at it to finalize it, or was it finalized at the last meeting?
It was finalized at the last meeting. And now we just have to get the document out and advertised. It's, it's quite a, you know, that, advertise. I've got a list of places we're going to send, through the electronic and emails and Facebook, you know, we'd be able to, and the word's already getting out. They know something's going on. We've already had people come to the station and call the station, so I...
So hiring a full-time firefighter similar to that of a police officer, it all goes through civil service. Tested, written, and oral exams through civil service, right?
Physical agility too.
Okay.
Now, it's different, the fire is different than the police, because M. Coles does it through the police department, which is a certification type of thing for the police.
Alrighty. Did you, you didn't have a question, did you? Alrighty, and did you have anything else?
No, that was it. Thank you.
Alrighty. So now that we're done with reports, we'll move on to public comment. If you would like to address the board, I'd ask that you'd come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to address this board.
My name is Gerald Roberts, 4487 Lindywood Drive. I was going to talk on just exactly what you just got through commenting on with regard to the response time. And I have a couple questions, and I don't know, I don't want to be put off and say, you can come in at a later point in time and talk to us specifically, because that's an old command, that we need answers now in front of the people here. Okay?
But we're not going to do that. This is public comment time, and it's time to make a comment.
Okay, I guess I'm going to make a comment, and I'm going to ask some questions. And I would hope that the response comes on with those questions. I would kind of like to know with our millage increase of 3.85 mils with regard to police and fire protection, is there a full-time person over here in this particular station right here? And why was that station and that unit not called about more than probably eight blocks down to Darby down here, rather than have to pull it in from Bristol Road? I was over on Bristol Road when that thing went by, and I noticed that when I got to the fire, when I was there, there was two other units that were already starting there. It seemed like it would be more efficient that that particular unit could have come out of here and been a lot closer, and maybe even beat those other two, Monday Township and Flushing Fire Trucks there. That was my question there. And I'm wondering, is, if each particular fire station, I think we got three, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a full-time person at every fire station so that that truck can be when the call comes in? Or do we have to wait for a response from volunteers? In other words, over and above our normal people that we have working that are on payroll?
We can answer, you can put that in your report next time, but we're not going to do a question and answer now.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. I'm hard of hearing, remember.
I said that, before you spoke, this isn't a question and answer time. You can ask those questions, but Chief Berkeley's not going to answer them now. He can put them in his report for next time. But we're not going to engage in question and answer, because it could continue all night.
Okay, I, I guess I got one comment here. It seems like equal injustice for all, or liberty and justice for all. And I noticed at other points in time, when people are up here like me, do get a response back and forth from either chief or from the fire department. But now, because I'm answering a question, asking a question, because I brought that point up, you're holding to the line? In other words, that question can't be answered by, by the acting chief? Is that what you're telling me, Karen?
I'm telling you, this is not a question and answer time, yes.
Oh, okay. I'll remember that.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
Dave Huffman, 20483 Warner Road. And I just have a couple of comments on the agenda tonight, where you're considering the involvement of paving the service road over here by Health Plus. And I just have a couple of comments on that. It's my understanding that the township's role in this thing is going to be to the tune of over $100,000 for some of the quotes that you've already been given by the road commission. My question, being a former road committee member, everybody in the township knows that there's all sorts of public roads in this township that need a lot more of attention than this little service drive over here. Also, I think the taxpayers, when they passed the 3.85 millage to the tune of $30 million in the last election, when you had that on the ballot in November, they were saying that they wanted public safety, and they did not vote for the new township road millage. And so what I don't understand is why money should be coming out of the general fund now that you don't have the road millage to operate under, from our general budget to pay for roads? I don't understand what kind of a logic that this, what you're thinking up here anymore. Also, I think a vote for this kind of nonsense makes me wonder if this will lead to some type of campaign contributions for members of the board that would vote for something like this. I've got a feeling that we're dealing nothing more than a shell game with our finances up here on the public dollar. Public dollars that should be paying for public safety are doing nothing for this township but a shell game to put personnel involved in the, in the fire department, in the, in the buildings when you want it up here. It's your whim. The taxpayers gave you a message that they wanted public safety, and I'm telling you, I think they're getting tired of the shell game that you're playing. There's no fire chief, there's no involvement. It's just ringing in your hands. It's always, "Come and see me if you have a question in a public meeting," which these meetings are for. If you have any questions, like Mr. Roberts was just now put out to pasture by some of the comments. And I think the taxpayers are really starting to get fed up with this kind of a shell game. It's getting tired, it's getting old, it's, it's almost demeaning. And most of all, like I've stated up here before, it's nothing but a public embarrassment for me as a taxpayer and the taxpayers of this community to listen to this stuff.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board? One last time, is there anyone who'd like to address the board? Then we'll move on to action items. On action item A, the only thing we have on the agenda is Health Source Parkway. So I did call over to the road commission, and they're closed today, they're on holiday. And the person who does the financing, the person who did the form for us, he was out last week. So I don't have anything new to add, except to say that when we first looked at Health Source Parkway, the reason we started doing that road was because those two businesses went to the road commission and said, "Do something about our road." And there was no way that the road commission was going to pay for that by, by themselves. So there was a meeting with Director Daley and Steve Snyder from Health Source, Health Plus, and Larry White from Patsy Lou, and they were willing to contribute 20% of the cost. That's part of the reason this road's getting done right now, is because it's a special assessment. They're willing to put in 20% of the cost as of last year, when the cost was $161,000. They're willing to pay 20% of that, and we have signed agreement with them. When the bids, when the estimate, when it all went out for, for bid, it came back in higher, and that's why I brought this to you. And so you had asked me if I had approached them, and I had said no, because I didn't know if the board wanted to proceed at a higher cost. So you have before you the same paper. The cost has gone up. The road commission's paying 27%, the township's paying 73%. And each of those businesses are going to pay the township 20%. That was on the agreement last year. Hold on a second, the date of it is... Was October 2014. That's where I have the agreement from Patsy Lou and Health Plus. So when they put it out for bid this spring, the cost came in higher, and that's when the road commission approached me and said, "Do you want to proceed?" The cost is $22,000 higher for the township. And the cost for the road commission is also increased. But I didn't approach the other two businesses for three reasons. One is, they're already paying $32,000 to repair that road, and that's a public road. It's not a residential road. Granted, there's only two businesses on that road, but that's a lot of money. And then when you look at, Patsy Lou is one of the biggest taxpayers in the township. Health Plus pays taxes on a portion of their business, but not most of it, because they're a nonprofit. So one reason why I didn't go to them was because they're a large taxpayer. Two is that they're already paying $32,000. And three, I don't know if this board wants to proceed, given that the cost of the project to us is going to be $22,000 higher than the estimate that they gave us last fall. So these are accurate numbers. And I want to know if this board wants to proceed. A motion would be in order to proceed.
Well, I'll make a motion to proceed for discussion purposes, but I think I have a number of questions here.
Sure. Is there a second?
For discussion. I'll support it for discussion.
So trustee Castle, go ahead with your questions.
What are the percentages, again, that the cost is going to be split?
The road commission's paying 27%. The township is paying 73%. That, that total's 100, correct? And of our 73%, Patsy Lou's going to pay 20%. Health Plus of Michigan's paying 20%. That leaves us to pay 33%. So between the two 20%, that's 40%, our 33%, that totals 73. Does that make sense?
It doesn't make sense what you said.
Okay. The road commission, of the total project, the road commission's going to pay 27% of that. They're going to build a township 73%.
Okay.
We could pay the whole thing, but we've got Patsy Lou and Health Plus, they've agreed to pay 20% each.
Of the total?
Of the 73. No, of the total.
192.
Well, it was 161.
Well, forget that. It's 192, according to this paper.
So let me back up. In October, when I brought this to you, the estimate was $161,000. And we agreed, we voted as a board to pay $117,530. And the road commission agreed to pay 27%, which was $43,470. to pay 27%, which was $43,470. Of that 117, Patsy Lou's paying $32,200, and Health Plus is paying $32,200, leaving the township a cost of $53,130. That's why I have a signed agreement with Patsy Lou and Health Plus. I have a signed agreement for that. They put that project out to bid this spring, and it came back higher. Our portion that they were gonna bill us was $117,000. They're now gonna bill us, let's see, this reflects a revised cost of the township of $140,000, which is $22,875 higher than what they were gonna bill us previously. The road commission is not going to bill Patsy Lou or Health Plus directly. They're billing us, and it's up to us to get that money from them.
All right. But again, are you saying that the agreement is that Health Plus is going to pay 20% of the total cost?
I haven't approached them, because we haven't agreed.
No, no. It was that they were gonna pay 20% of the total cost.
Of the total cost.
Not 20% of the 73%.
Right, they're gonna pay, right, you're right.
20% of the 73% is 14%.
They're gonna pay $32,000 each. I have an agreement for them to pay $32,200 each.
All right. So, of the total project, we were to pay, the road commission is gonna, was gonna pay 27%. Does that include engineering and supervision?
That's, no.
Or do they waive that?
They waive that, and then they're paying 27 off the total. And here, I'm reading this agreement with Patsy Lou, and their signature's on here, and Health Plus. It was 20% of the total project cost, when the project was $161,000. So then, it goes out to bid, and it comes back higher. They came to me and said, "Does your township wanna proceed, because the cost is higher?" I have not approached Patsy Lou or Health Plus, because if we say no, the project's off.
Well, it would seem to me that this road, the road's in bad shape. A lot of people use it and cut through it, and those are two substantial businesses there that need, that need this road. But, and it seems to me, though, that they would be willing to pay 20% of the total cost, even total revised cost. And the fact that you haven't even gone to them yet doesn't make sense to me.
I've contacted them.
What does that mean? You made a phone call?
I did. I contacted them, and I let them know the cost of the project was increasing.
Could we revise, would it be appropriate to revise our motion, or revise the proposal, that we go forward so long as the road commission does pay the engineering and supervision? In addition, they pay 27% of the total cost, that Patsy Lou pay 20% of the total cost revised, that Health Plus pay 20% of the total cost revised, and that we pay 33% of the total cost. And I believe, from information that I've received, or from discussions that I've had, that they would be willing to do that, and they may even be willing to pay more. So, that would be an appropriate approach, I think.
So, I'll tell, I'll just reiterate that the road commission is not gonna sign a contract with Patsy Lou or Health Plus. That's us and them.
No, but we could sign an agreement with Patsy Lou and Health Plus, that of the total cost, they would pay a certain percentage.
I can approach them. If this board is gonna vote yes, I can approach them. If this board voted no, I don't need to bother. But what I'm gonna say on your request is that these two companies are paying $32,200 on a public road that belongs to the road commission. And I don't think we should ask them for anymore. $32,200 is a lot of money.
I don't understand we're not willing to ask. These are substantial businesses that could well afford it, and you should at least ask for it. And my motion would be, we go ahead with the road if they, each one of them, are willing to pay 20% of the total cost. Period. I understand that it's not an agreement with the road commission. They'll bill us, but this agreement can be revised, that they would pay.
So, is that your motion? I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's my motion.
Did you wanna hold a stick?
I have a question. I did, I did some math at home, too. And I don't, I don't look at the last year's quote, I don't look at the last year's figure. I look at what we have in front of us, 192,336. I rounded it off to 192, and 27% for the road commission is 48,000. 20% for Health Plus, and 20% for Patsy Lou is 38,400. And the 33%, or 35%, because it added up to 70, 40, 40, 75.
33%.
Was 33% is a little less than, a little more than 65,000. But, I think, I've had some conversations. I talked to one of the board members of Health Plus, and he says, "I'm sure they'll be willing to help." I says, "There's gotta be more than 20%." He said, "Well, have somebody talk to somebody." I says, "Well, I thought the supervisor was supposed to call both of them." I happened to talk to Mr. Williamson and not Patsy Lou, and he said he'd be willing to pay 30%. So, I think if you've made the effort to talk to him personally, I think we can lower this 33% from the township fund, maybe to 22% or 20. So, why not try to save some money if all you gotta do is ask?
So, I hear what you're saying, and a couple things. Part of your calculations did not include the fact that the road commission pays for engineering and inspection, but that's not part of the total cost.
But I'm figuring 192,000, that's what the paper says.
That's fine.
And you said they're paying for the engineering, which is free, plus a 27%. So, as far as we're concerned, we're paying, they're paying 27% of 192,000. Forget the engineering, 'cause it's free.
But that comes off the top of that cost. About 20... These, you have this, this is...
All I know is it says, "A recent bid from the contractor for this project was $192,336." I assume that's what we gotta pay or be committed to. So, if you take 27% of that, it's 48,000. You take 20%.
That's right. I don't have their, I don't have their cost in front of me. I just have our cost.
Well, I got, I got the figures you, on the board packet. That's what I'm going by. Says 192,336,000.
Right.
Okay.
That's right.
So, let's take that figure, and 27%, 20%, 20%, 33% for the township. Now, if one of those two businesspeople decide they wanna give 30%, well, that'll just lower the township's contribution without the cost of billing these people or chasing them. And if they don't pay, then you gotta put it on the tax roll, and then the money's coming out of general fund. I'm willing to go along with what Frank said, but I just, I just, I'm just figuring, as a layperson. Now, maybe, I'm not figuring right. But anyway, that's what I figured. That's all, Madam Supervisor.
Are there any, is there any further discussion or more questions?
Yeah, I just wanna make a comment, too. When this originally came to the board, I did not support it. I'm not gonna support it again. I feel that that road is not used by enough, the traffic generated, it's not enough by the residents in order to spend this kinda money. We do have a road committee, and even though most of the funds from that millage has been expended, I think they still should be allowed to function, and anything of this magnitude, or any road should be, to be considered, should also go through that committee.
It did. It absolutely did.
This particular, well, along with the increase.
John Lateside's here, isn't he?
I betcha.
John, no, not the increase. This original... Right, the increase did not go to them. So...
Did they support it?
They supported the project.
Right, okay, I just wanted them to know.
Given the fact that there was gonna be a cooperation with the two businesses, the township and the road commission, to do the project. That, that did, and they're aware of that. But when they put it out to bid, and it came back higher, that didn't go to them. 'Cause we're talking a matter of $22,000 for the township. I did not take that to them, because they already recommended that we do it. We already have a signed contract in place based on the estimate. So, and these two companies, I will say this, they were advised that the estimate could be different from the actual bids when they go out to bid. It could've been lower, we didn't know. But they were also told it could've been higher. So, the road advisory committee did, they were part of the original agreement, but they weren't a part of it. Increase, the last part. So, anything else?
Nope, thank you.
Madam Clerk, did you have anything to say?
No.
I have one thing. Let's not get confused with the last bid of 140,000.
That was estimate.
The quote today is 192,336,000. That's the figures that we gotta use when we figure percentages. That's all, Madam Supervisor. Thank you.
So, Madam Clerk, let's see.
I have a motion and support on the floor.
Can you read the motion, please?
As revised, or as Mr. Castle?
I don't know. I just wanna hear what his original motion was. You wanna state it for us?
I can help you out. You said 20% revised for, of the total cost for Health, or for Health Park Sourceway, 20% revised for the new total cost for Patsy Lou Williamson, 33% for the township revised cost. So, and the 27% for the road commission, including the engineering and architectural.
I'm including the engineering.
Well, not including that. So, the, and the total cost altogether, as the new total of 192,336.
92,336.
So, does that equal 100%?
Yes, 100% of the new cost, correct? Is that correct, Trustee Castle?
Yes, I guess, yes, it does. That, the motion, that's the motion.
Okay, so, a couple of things. I'm not in favor of going back and asking these two companies for more money, because that's a township road. But... They're gonna say, "I'll ask you this. If we approve that, and I go over there and they say no, I'll come back to the township board and ask them if they're gonna absorb that cost."
Then they don't get their road if they say no.
Well...
Very simple.
We'll go from here. Your motion was to approve the additional cost that's gonna be billed to the township, as long as Patsy Lou and Health Plus are gonna pay 20% of those additional costs of the total project, right? 20%.
New revised cost.
Yeah, as long as they pay each 20% of the total cost, and the road commission pays their 27% of the total cost.
So, there's a motion on the floor and a second. If there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, roll call, please, on approving the increased funding, and that's contingent on Patsy Lou and Health Plus paying their increase, their share of the increase.
I'd like to say something before we vote. I think it's very important, Karen, that you talk to these two people, because they might give you more than 20%, which means the township will be committed for a lot less. And I don't think it would hurt. And you don't have to go too far.
I understand. I've been over there.
I think you might, I think you might be surprised.
And, and I will do that. If that's what this board votes on, that's what I will do.
Okay. Well... Based on what Ms., what, what are you saying, George, that they might be willing to pay more?
Yes.
Well, if they might be willing to pay more, our motion should be for more, because...
Well, you could say or more, 20% or more.
Well, all right, 20% or more. Let's do it that way, or more.
You get that?
Mm-hmm. Kathy, we both got it, don't we? I think so. I have a motion and support on the floor for the second revision.
All righty. Madam Clerk, roll call, please, on approving the funding out of general fund for Health Source Boulevard. And the new cost is $192,000. The road commission is going to pay for engineering and inspection, along with 20% of the cost, that total cost.
27%.
That's what I said, 27%. The township will be billed 73%. And of that 73%, we are going to ask, you're sending me over to ask Patsy Lou and Health Plus to pay 20% or more of the new increased cost. Is that correct?
Excuse me, Supervisor. This is not of the 73%.
No, no, of the total cost.
We're not asking them to pay 20% of the 73%. We're asking them to pay 20% or more.
Of the total cost.
Of the total cost.
Of the 192,336.
Right.
Are we, are we agreed on that?
Yes.
Is that the motion?
Is that the motion? I believe so.
Madam? Clerk, roll call, please.
Mrs. Parker?
No. How many, how many do we need?
We need three to pass them. 'Cause there's five here.
Try to...
There's one, two, three.
George, use your rock.
There's five here. I need, I need three.
Oh, use, I'll use the damn rock. Give me that rock.
No.
Ms. Court, yes? Mr. Castle? For the new second?
What's the vote so far?
It's no, no.
No, no, and you vote yes? I vote yes.
Mr. Manoudis?
I vote yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. With no further business and without objection, we'll call this meeting adjourned.